Thank you. Now, what do I? Oh, they haven't turned it on yet.
Yeah, so the only thing.
There's Dr. Stooki.
Is, so if you want to mute yourself.
Okay, that's the mute and unmute.
Yeah.
Right.
Welcome to the Southern Illinois University Board of Trustees Committee meeting. In the absence of Chair Gilbert, I will serve as chair for the meeting today. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Abuzina.
Connelly.
Present.
Curtis.
Present.
Gilbert. May need to unmute. Judge Gilbert. I heard him on earlier.
Yeah, he was.
Hightower.
Yes.
Salger.
Present.
Simmons.
Here.
Williams.
Pursuant to the Board's bylaws, trustee Gilbert and Saager notified the Board Secretary that they are unable to attend the meeting in person due to health reasons. They are permitted to participate by video audio conference if the members physically present vote to allow them to do so. Is there a motion to allow trustee Gilbert and Saager to join the July 10, 2025 board meeting virtually?
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Abuzina.
Connelly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Gilbert. Hightower.
Yes.
Salger.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
The motion passes. Roger Tetrick submitted a letter of resignation as a member of the Board effective May 1, 2025. As such, we need to elect a member to the executive committee and update trustee appointments. The next order of business is to elect an additional member to the Board Executive Committee. I nominate Sarah Saager to serve as a member of the executive committee along with the current members Chair Gilbert and trustee Simmons. The motion.
So moved.
Second. Judge Gilbert.
Are there any other nominations? The nominations are closed. Madam Secretary, please proceed with the roll call for the election of Sarah Saager as a member of the executive committee.
Abuzina.
Connelly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Hightower.
Yes.
Salger.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Williams. And Gilbert.
Yes, Gilbert, yes.
Thank you.
I declare that by the majority of voting members present that Sarah Saager has been elected as a member of the executive committee. Next, in the absence of Chair Gilbert, I want to, on behalf of Chair Gilbert, move forward with appointments. Ed Curtis as Chair of the Finance Committee, Tony Williams as the Board Representative to the Board of Directors, Southern Illinois Foundation, with Bill Gilbert as the alternate. Ed Curtis is appointed to serve the, as the Board Representative to Joint Trustee Committee for the Springfield Medical Education Programs and also appointed to serve as Board Representative to the SIU Healthcare Board of Directors. We're now proceeding to committee meetings. We'll start with academic matters. I'm going to appoint Tony Williams as Chair Pro Tim of today's academic matters meeting. Trustee Williams, please proceed.
The meeting of Academic Matters Committee is now in session. Vice President Gupchuk, are there any announcements?
A mic would help. Thank you, trustee Williams. I would like to provide two quick updates to the Board of Trustees. First, I would like Josie Rawls of SIUC and Tyan Cherry of SIUE to provide an update on the transfer network improvement community work that this SIU system has been doing with the National Association for Higher Education Systems. As a reminder, this is a grassroots effort that utilizes improvement science in developing and testing measurable change to help improve two to four-year transfer rates on our campuses. Josie and Tyan are joining us virtually. Would you please proceed? Josie, could you please begin and followed by Tyan?
Sure, thank you. So like Dr. Gupchuk said, my name is Josie Rawls. I'm the Associate Director for Transfer Relations with SIU Carbondale. Through our work with NASH, we are proud to say that SIU Carbondale is closing the accessibility gaps by addressing the baccalaureate needs of this state. We are watering the deserts, if you will. Our focus is on strengthening community college partnerships and outlining seamless transfer degree pathways, and that allows SIU Carbondale to be a place where transfer students can thrive. Using the improvement science model supported by NASH, we are implementing small tests of change and analyzing our data results and progress, and gradually expanding those tests of change campus-wide as they prove to be successful. We're addressing financial barriers by removing application fees for our local community college districts. This has shown promising results as we are up in applications from those combined districts compared to this time last cycle, and we're up currently over 6% in enrollments from those community colleges. Specifically, our registrations from John A. Logan are up 4%, and our Southeastern Illinois College registrations are up 81.3%. While addressing the needs of our local community colleges is imperative, our efforts do span throughout the state as well. We partnered with City Colleges of Chicago on an intent-to-transfer project. City Colleges staff gathered data on transfer-bound students who are considering SIU Carbondale. These students were sent personalized messaging and targeted marketing throughout the cycle. This project will span multiple years, but we are already seeing positive results. Our dedicated staff located in Chicago are committed to serving the transfer student population from city colleges and the Chicagoland area. SIU Carbondale has seen and heard the needs of our state population. Attainment of a bachelor's degree is directly tied to earning a living wage and economic security. While there are countless benefits to attending on-campus, we are aware that the opportunity to relocate to Carbondale is not practical for all. With this in mind, SIU Carbondale develops a lucky step ahead. This online initiative gives financial incentive to students completing their bachelor's degree online in one of 12 key academic programs. These programs address the needs of our state, focusing on workforce shortages in areas like education, healthcare, and manufacturing. I'm proud to say that we've partnered with 45 of the 48 community colleges in Illinois on this initiative. Lastly, I'm excited to share a new test of change that we will begin to test in this upcoming recruitment cycle. SIU Carbondale is partnering with at least two local community colleges for an automatic transcript exchange. The efforts and dollars of the transfer students will no longer be required to obtain a transcript from their current community college. Upon their admissions application, SIU Carbondale will request their official academic record from these partner institutions, allowing for quicker processing and a shorter time to decision for these students. We will begin this process with John A. Logan and Shawnee Community College with the hopes of expanding regionally and throughout the state. I appreciate you all taking the time to hear about our efforts and dedication to the transfer student population. I have the honor of working alongside a great team of people, both here at Carbondale and at Edwardsville, and our main professional goal is to make SIU the destination for Illinois transfer students. I will pass it over to Tyan from SIUE.
Thank you so much, Josie, and thank you for the opportunity to share our work today. We deeply value your time, so I'm going to jump right in. We've engaged in three key improvement projects focused on strengthening the transfer student experience, which is, you know, is an essential part of our enrollment strategy and student success mission. First, we addressed a common barrier. We realized students were often missing their official community college transcripts. So led by Polly Walters in our transfer center, we partnered with SWIC, one of our major feeders, to streamline the transcript request process. Initially, we only had one of 13 students complete this process, but through multiple improvement cycles, including earlier outreach and expansion of our testing to Cass Casket College, we've increased participation to 20 of 84 students in the third cycle, moving from a 7.7% to a 19% success rate. We're currently analyzing data from our fourth cycle and expect to see continuous improvement. Second, we worked to improve our communication with and use of data shared regarding prospective transfer students from SWIC. In Cycle Three, we established a consistent monthly exchange of student interest lists and communicated our use of those data. As a result, 205 prospective students were added to our prospective student lists and received targeted communications from admissions. We're continuing this effort in Cycle Four. This effort was originally championed by Liz Calderero in our financial aid office and has since been taken over by Kelly Brooks and Brooklyn McManon in our admissions office. Part of Cycle Four will be to expand to additional partners for this information, allowing us to place even more prospective students in our enrollment funnel. And then finally, we focused on speeding up the handoff from admissions to academic advising. Early personal outreach helps students enroll more confidently and quickly. For this effort, we were led by Wendy Robender in the School of Engineering, and also were supported by partnerships with Norris Manning in the School of Business, Brian Hindsher in the College of Arts and Sciences, Effie Hortus in the Office of First Year and Transitional Advising. This approach eventually led to 39 engineering transfer students and 57 arts and sciences transfer students, attending advising appointments more than doubling prior year comparisons. Cycle Four is now underway, and we're excited to be able to report those results in the coming week. So in closing, I'd like to thank you, the SIU Board, SIUE leadership, Harish Gupta at the system level, and also my counterpart at SIUC, Josie Rawls, and the entire SIUC team. The information sharing we've been able to engage in has been very useful. And thank you also to our Nick sponsors, Provost Denise Cobb for the first two cycles, and now Vice Chancellor Andy Benoit for assuming this role in Cycle Three. Your commitment is making a tangible difference, not only in transfer student success, but in helping us strengthen our overall enrollment. By focusing on these changes and drawing greater attention to the needs of transfer students, we believe there are other ancillary benefits for our recruitment and retention. So thank you again for your time and for championing this important work.
Thank you so much for your impressive work, Josie and Tyan, and all your teams. I would now like to invite Todd Wakeland, Director of Export Controls for the SIU system, to provide a short update on the international travel policy as requested by the Board of Trustees.
There we go. Sorry about that. The international travel policy was passed by you all last meeting, and after that meeting, you requested that we give you an update. After the meeting, we did draft procedures for that policy. We were concerned that there would be some issues regarding the policy and procedures. We presented it to the faculty senate on both campuses. Both campuses accepted it without concern or without questions, so therefore it went ahead. Starting July 1, it's officially live, and we have about 35 trips registered with that registry software at the current time. And so we hope to continue to educate the faculty and staff on international travel. We have training coming up in the fall, and we will include that into the training we do in the fall. If you have any questions?
Thank you for the progress report, and thank you for being diligent in getting us the information that we requested at our last meeting.
You're welcome.
Thank you, trustee Williams. That ends the announcements.
Our first order of business is the approval of minutes of the April 17, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting held April 17, 2025?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call vote.
Abuzina. Hightower.
Yes.
Salger.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. The motion passes. The next item is the approval of new programs, reasonable and moderate extensions, approval of off-campus program locations, and academic program eliminations and suspensions, July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Vice President Gupchuk, will you please speak to this item?
Thank you, trustee Williams. Item H in the board materials, the annual listing of academic program changes, is provided to you in your packet for approval. This includes the submission of tables to the Illinois Board of Higher Education on behalf of Southern Illinois University Edwardsville and Southern Illinois University Carbondale for approval of new programs, reasonable and moderate extensions, approval of off-campus program locations, and academic program eliminations and suspensions for the period of July 1, 2025, sorry, July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve Board agenda, item H?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please perform roll call vote.
Abuzina. Hightower.
Yes.
Salger.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. The motion passes. If there's no other business. If there's no other business before the Academic Matters Committee, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Our next order of business is Finance Committee. Trustee Curtis, would you please proceed?
Williams?
Yes.
The item was approved. Finance meeting is now in session. Committee Item Number Three is the approval of purchase of beverage, snacks, and vending service for SIUC. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting held April 17. Chancellor Lane, will you present the item?
Yes, thank you, Trustee Curtis.
Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
This matter seeks to award a contract to Pepsi Mid-America beginning August 1, 2025,
Second. Thank you. And Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call.
at an estimated total of $2,633,000 over a 10-year contract term.
Curtis?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
The contract will support vending services, bulk purchases for university departments,
The minutes are approved. Committee Item Number Two is the approval of salary and appointment of the Executive
and resale within intercollegiate athletics, the student center, university housing, and
Director of Audit, Southern Illinois University System. President Mahoney, will you present this item?
residence life, as well as for campus-wide events and services.
Yeah, I'm pleased to present Dr. Yvonne Thompson as the choice for the new Executive
Bids from vendors to provide vending beverage and snack items were received in accordance
Director of Audit.
with the Illinois Procurement Code and the university procurement policies.
This was the result of a national search that we conducted for this position.
The contract will be funded by the sale of products in the student center, athletics,
Dr. Thompson comes to us from the University of Chicago, where she was the Assistant Director
and vending, along with the student dining plans in university housing and from non-appropriated
of Compliance, Internal Audit, and Enterprise Risk Management. She also has experience with Charles Schwab, KPMG, Price Waterhouse, Coopers, and Butterfield
accounts. The actual cost is dependent on the amount of products sold to customers.
Banks, over 20 years of experience outside of higher education as well as experience
Myself, the Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs, Director of Intercollegiate Athletics, and
within higher education.
the Vice Chancellor for Administration and Finance have recommended or would like to
So that is my recommendation.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion for the Finance Committee to approve the item?
recommend this matter for your approval.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion for the Finance Committee to approve this item?
So moved.
Second. Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call.
So moved.
Second. Madam Secretary, would you please perform the roll call?
Curtis?
Yes.
Curtis? Connolly?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
The item is approved by committee. Committee Items Four and Five are approvals of purchase through SIUC. The first for technical services for the Center of Workforce Development at SIUC, and the second for a system-wide software license contract. Mr. Clark, will you present these items?
Yes. Item four is seeking approval to enter a contract with MSFW Incorporated of Springfield, Illinois, for the provision of technical services in support of the Illinois WorkNet Portal, case management systems, and other workforce-related web projects. The agreement spans an initial two-year term with four optional two-year renewals totaling up to $26 million for over 10 years. The contract is essential to fulfilling SIU's obligation under a $21 million intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Commerce, Economic, and Economic Opportunity, as well as other grant-funded initiatives from DCEO, Department of Human Services, the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation, and others. MSFW was selected through a competitive RFP process as the most qualified vendor to continue this work. Their services will enable the Center for Workforce Development to enhance the Illinois WorkNet system, and will be funded entirely through non-appropriated funds provided by state, federal, and federal agencies included in the above partners. Item Five is seeking a board approval for strategic investment in technology that will significantly enhance curriculum and catalog management across Southern Illinois University System. We request authorization to enter into a five-year software licensing agreement with SHI International Corporation for the implementation and use of Course Dog Curriculum Management. This contract, not to exceed $2 million, will serve both the SIU Carbondale and Edwardsville campuses, and the cost will be proportionally allocated between them. In fall of 2023, a joint committee representing Carbondale and Edwardsville faculty advising registrar, provost, and IT offices conducted a thorough evaluation of leading vendors. After extensive demonstration and feedback, Course Dog emerged as the clear choice due to its robust functionality, user-friendly interface, and strong integration capabilities. Course Dog is a proven leader in academic operations and offering tools that streamline catalog creation, curriculum updates, scheduling, and assessment. This investment supports our digital transformation goals and replaces outdated manual systems -- processes, rather, with a more modern and sustainable solution. This collaborative effort enforces the unified and efficient approach to curriculum management across the SIU system. We respectfully request the Board's approval for these purchases. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion by the Finance Committee to approve Board Agenda Items M and N?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, could you please perform the roll call vote?
Curtis?
Yes.
Connolly? Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
These items are both approved by committee. Committee Item Six is the approval of purchase for trash and recycling services at SIUE. And Toy is here. Will you present this item?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. This matter seeks approval for the purchase of trash and recycling services from Waste Management of Illinois Incorporated on the Edwardsville, Alton, East St. Louis campuses and the St. Clair Head Start Centers. The university may renew the initial one-year contract for up to an additional four one-year contracts ending June 30, 2030. The estimated cost of the five-year contract is $2 million and will be funded from department operating funds based upon service needs at the various facilities at these locations. Chancellor Minor and interim Vice Chancellor for Administration, Dr. Redslaff, recommend the approval of this matter.
Thank you, Ann. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve Finance Committee?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll call?
Curtis?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
The item is approved by committee. Committee Items Four and Five are approvals of purchase through SIUC. The first for technical services for the Center of Workforce Development at SIUC, and the second for a system-wide software license contract. Mr. Clark, will you present these items?
Yes. Item four is seeking approval to enter a contract with MSFW Incorporated of Springfield, Illinois, for the provision of technical services in support of the Illinois WorkNet Portal, case management systems, and other workforce-related web projects. The agreement spans an initial two-year term with four optional two-year renewals totaling up to $26 million for over 10 years. The contract is essential to fulfilling SIU's obligation under a $21 million intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Commerce, Economic, and Economic Opportunity, as well as other grant-funded initiatives from DCEO, Department of Human Services, the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation, and others. MSFW was selected through a competitive RFP process as the most qualified vendor to continue this work. Their services will enable the Center for Workforce Development to enhance the Illinois WorkNet system, and will be funded entirely through non-appropriated funds provided by state, federal, and federal agencies included in the above partners. Item Five is seeking a board approval for strategic investment in technology that will significantly enhance curriculum and catalog management across Southern Illinois University System. We request authorization to enter into a five-year software licensing agreement with SHI International Corporation for the implementation and use of Course Dog Curriculum Management. This contract, not to exceed $2 million, will serve both the SIU Carbondale and Edwardsville campuses, and the cost will be proportionally allocated between them. In fall of 2023, a joint committee representing Carbondale and Edwardsville faculty advising registrar, provost, and IT offices conducted a thorough evaluation of leading vendors. After extensive demonstration and feedback, Course Dog emerged as the clear choice due to its robust functionality, user-friendly interface, and strong integration capabilities. Course Dog is a proven leader in academic operations and offering tools that streamline catalog creation, curriculum updates, scheduling, and assessment. This investment supports our digital transformation goals and replaces outdated manual systems -- processes, rather, with a more modern and sustainable solution. This collaborative effort enforces the unified and efficient approach to curriculum management across the SIU system. We respectfully request the Board's approval for these purchases. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion by the Finance Committee to approve Board Agenda Items M and N?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, could you please perform the roll call vote?
Curtis?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
These items are both approved by committee. Thank you, Dr. Cruz. Committee Item Nine proposed the approval of an incentive compensation for Chancellor Lane. President Mahoney, will you present this item?
Yes. According to Chancellor Lane's contract, he's eligible for a performance bonus of up to $65,000. I am recommending the full bonus, based on a number of factors, but not limited to the fact that we've seen positive enrollment increases at Carbondale over the last couple of years, and he is actively involved both in the strategies to increase enrollment as well as active in the recruitment process itself. Positive fundraising, the second-best fundraising year ever in the past year, and we've just passed $400 million to our half-billion-dollar goal in our campaign. The move towards being both a Research One and Opportunity University designations from Carnegie, strong community relations and relationships with key people in the area, including community college presidents, and hires in leadership roles and stability in leadership roles that's been part of the success of the Carbondale campus. So all of those resulted in my recommendation. I always feel it's important to point out when I recommend the bonus for Chancellor Lane, Chancellor Minor does not have that in his current contract, so the only reason we're not recommending that for him is because that's not part of his current contract. But his performance was also outstanding in last year.
Is there any discussion by the committee? Hearing none, could I have a motion for the Finance Committee to approve this item?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, would you please perform the roll call?
Curtis?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
The item is approved by committee. Committee Item 11 proposed the removal of University Hall from the Revenue Bond System and the reassignment to the College of Health and Human Sciences at SIUC. Dr. Stuckey, will you present this item?
Thank you, Trustee Curtis. 20 years ago, the Carbondale campus bought University Hall, which was a privately-owned residence hall that sat on about five acres at the eastern edge of the campus. For many years, it was used for housing, but due to changes in housing demand and other factors, it has had limited use for housing in recent years. Campus administration recommends removing it from the Revenue Bond System and reassigning it to the College of Health and Human Services for use in its programs. We seek your approval to do so.
Is there any discussion by the committee? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call.
Curtis?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
This item is approved by committee. If there is no further business before the Finance Committee, this meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you. Next order of business is the Architectural and Design Committee. Trustee Simmons.
Thank you, Chair. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting we had on April 17. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Madam Secretary, perform the roll call.
Simmons?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you. Second item is the project approval of public electric vehicle charging partnership with the Egyptian Electric Cooperative Association and SIUC. Vice Chancellor Simmons, could you please present this?
Thank you. This matter seeks project approval for the installation of public electric vehicle charging stations at three Southern Illinois University Carbondale locations through a partnership with Egyptian Electric Cooperative Association. The sites will be located in Visitor Parking Lot 13, east of the Student Center, at the Transportation Education Center, and at the entrance to Touch of Nature. Each site will include a high-powered Level 3 DC-FASH chargers, with each charger capable of serving two vehicles simultaneously. So the Student Center will have two chargers that will serve four vehicles. The Glen Poshard TEC will have one charger serving two vehicles, and Touch of Nature will have two chargers serving four vehicles. This initiative supports the university's sustainability objectives and promotes statewide electric vehicle infrastructure development. Currently in Carbondale, there's only two Level 2 chargers at the Ford and Chevy dealers. The only other Level 3 is in Marion near Highway 13 in Interstate 57. So this is really a wonderful thing for Carbondale. Under the agreement, SIU will grant Egyptian Electric a license to install, operate, maintain, and removal of the charging equipment. The charging stations will be accessible to the public 24 hours earlier in the presentations we had from Josie and the representative from SIU Edwardsville on the retention or the enrollment from our community colleges, that didn't happen before. President Mahoney has done an outstanding job, and I think that this is a well-deserved recognition not only of his leadership, but I, again, echo everything. Dr. Hightower said that he has done outstanding job in marshaling the university going forward, not only in the enrollment, retention, and the R1 status, Carnegie R1 status. We are on the move, and a lot of it is due to not only the leadership of President Mahoney, but also our two chancellors who have done an outstanding job in leading their respective campuses. So, I definitely support the incentive compensation, the compensation for President Mahoney.
Thank you, Chair Gilbert. And with that, I give it back to...
Thank you, Dr. Hightower. Is there any further discussion by the committee? Hearing none, is there a motion by the Finance Committee to approve this item?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, would you please perform the roll call?
Curtis.
Yes.
Connolly.
Yes.
Williams.
This item is approved by committee. Committee Item 11 proposed the removal of University Hall from the Revenue Bonds System and the reassignment to the College of Health and Human Sciences at SIUC. Dr. Stukey, will you present this item?
Thank you, Trustee Curtis. Twenty years ago, the Carbondale campus bought University Hall, which was a privately-owned residence hall that sat on about five acres at the eastern edge of the campus. For many years, it was used for housing, but due to changes in housing demand and other factors, it has had limited use for housing in recent years. Campus administration recommends removing it from the Revenue Bonds System and reassigning it to the College of Health and Human Services for use in its programs. We seek your approval to do so.
Is there any discussion by the committee? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call.
Curtis.
Yes.
Connolly.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
This item is approved by committee. If there is no further business before the Finance Committee, this meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you. Next order of business is the Architectural and Design Committee. Trustee Simmons.
First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting we had on April 17th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded, Madam Secretary, perform the roll call.
Simmons.
Yes.
Connolly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Thank you. Second item is a project approval, public electric vehicle charging partnership with the Egyptian Electric Cooperative Association and SIUC. Vice Chancellor Simmons, could you please present this?
Thank you. This matter seeks project approval for the installation of public electric vehicle charging stations at three Southern Illinois University Carbondale locations through a partnership with Egyptian Electric Cooperative Association. The sites will be located in visitor parking lot 13, east of the Student Center, at the Transportation Education Center, and at the entrance to Touch of Nature. Each site will include a high-powered Level III DC fast chargers, with each charger capable of serving two vehicles simultaneously. So, the Student Center will have two chargers that will serve four vehicles. The Glen Poshard TEC will have one charger serving two vehicles, and Touch of Nature will have two chargers serving four vehicles. This initiative supports the university's sustainability objectives and promotes statewide electric vehicle infrastructure development. Currently in Carbondale, there's only two Level II chargers at the Ford and Chevy dealers. The only other Level III is in Marion near Highway 13 in Interstate 57. So, this is really a wonderful thing for Carbondale. Under the agreement, SIU will grant Egyptian Electric a license to install, operate, maintain, and removing, and removal of the charging equipment. The charging stations will be accessible to the public 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Each site will have one ADA compliant charging space. Each site must operate at least five years. Egyptian Electric will maintain ownership and operational responsibility for the charging equipment. Users will pay Egyptian Electric directly for charging and parking time through a point-of-sale kiosk or a mobile application. At the Transportation Education Center and Touch of Nature, sites are within the Egyptian Electric service territory and will not impact existing SIUC utility infrastructure or accounts. The Student Center location will be served by the SIUC main campus electricity district, and then we will provide electric distribution transformer that NSIUC will install and maintain. Facilities and energy management will cover the nominal costs for removal of the existing transformer and installation of the new transformer. The site will be metered to track energy consumption, power demand, and parking duration, and then we'll invoice Egyptian Electric monthly to recover energy costs and parking fees. Egyptian Electric has been awarded grant funding through the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, driving a cleaner Illinois program to cover up to 80% of project costs. This grant is authorized by the Electric Vehicle Act and the IEPA Charging Infrastructure Grant Program. Egyptian Electric is providing the remaining required cost match and will recover the cost through user fees. The Chancellor and the Vice Chancellor for Administration and Finance at SIUC have recommended this matter to the President. Thank you for your consideration.
Vice Chancellor Simmons, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Madam Secretary, please perform the roll call.
Simmons.
Yes.
Connolly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Thank you. Committee Item 3 is approval of grant easement to the City of Carbondale. Vice Chancellor Simmons, again, we present this item.
Yes, thank you. This matter seeks approval for the granting of permanent and temporary easements over Southern Illinois University Carbondale property to the City of Carbondale for drainage and construction access related to the planned improvements along Pleasant Hill Road. The City of Carbondale is expected to bid the project in the fall of 2025. The City of Carbondale is planning infrastructure improvements to Pleasant Hill Road that require access to and across property owned by the Board of Trustees of Southern Illinois University. To facilitate this work, six permanent and six temporary easements have been identified and surveyed by the city's engineering consultants. The detail of those easements are included in the board matter with the parcel numbers. All easements are located adjacent to or near existing Pleasant Hill Road corridor, and the granting will ensure successful completion of roadway and drainage improvements. The project will support enhancement infrastructure for both the university and the surrounding Carbondale community. There's no monetary exchange involved in this transaction. The easements are being conveyed at no cost to the City of Carbondale. Copies of all easements are on file with the Executive Secretary of the Board of Trustees for recording. The Chancellor and the Vice Chancellor for Administration and Finance at SIUC have recommended this item to the President. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Simmons. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Simmons.
Yes.
Connolly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Yes. Motion is passed, and Item B will be on the board's omnibus motion. Items number four and five of our agenda are a project approval and notice of award of contract for the School of Medicine and approval of grant permanent utility easement to the City of Springfield. Dr. Cruz, you'll be here with us for a couple of these.
Yes, thank you. So, this is number four. Board Agenda Item W seeks approval and award of contracts by the Capital Development Board for the Springfield Combined Laboratory Facility Chiller's Cooling Tower Replacement. That's the building that's directly northwest of here. It was built in 1998, still has its original mechanical systems. Some have failed. This project will replace the both chillers, four cooling towers, associated controls, pumps, valves, roofing structures. The total cost of this project is estimated at $4.5 million and is funded by the Capital Development Board through an emergency funding mechanism. The Capital Development Board has completed the award process. The successful contractor is Hinson Robinson Company of Springfield. That's number four. Number five, which is X, seeks approval to grant permanent utility easements to the City of Springfield on property located at 4801 Wabash Avenue, Springfield, Illinois, on the western edge of the city. It's a nine-acre property. It seeks approval to grant permanent easements to the City of Springfield for utility infrastructure, including electric, telecommunication, water, and sewer. Plans for the property include future consideration for a building there for us. All of those easements are attached in the things that follow this board matter. So, that's all.
Item W and X.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I guess no questions. Dr. Cruz, will you call the roll, please?
Simmons.
Yes.
Connolly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. And Dr. Cruz, back for our Agenda Item Six, which is Board Agenda Item Y, approval to grant a reciprocal draining easement with Memorial Medical Center. Could you talk?
Now, this is for the same property as the last Item 4801. Wabash seeks approval to establish reciprocal easement rights with Memorial Medical Center to facilitate drainage of water into a retention pond located at 4801 Wabash Avenue, shared property line partially on both properties. So, the reciprocal drainage easement grants from Springfield Memorial Hospital to the university and the university grants to Springfield Memorial Hospital, a perpetual non-exclusive easement for the purpose of draining water into this retention pond.
Okay, well, thank you. Any questions or a motion for this item to be on the board?
So moved.
I'll second that. And Madam Secretary, will you call the roll?
Simmons.
Yes.
Connolly.
Yes.
Curtis.
I'm staying.
Thanks.
Thank you. Board Agenda Item Y will be put on the agenda for the omnibus motion. Our Agenda Item Eight is a project budget approval. Sorry. Got ahead of myself. Item Seven, please. Item Seven is an informational report on the proposed public-private partnership housing project involving SIU Foundation. Dr. Kupchak, this is exciting. I'd like to...
Thank you. Yes, Trustee Simmons, we do not want to advance past this. So, we've got an emphasis for information report. Paula, we've got a slide.
We will have a PowerPoint if you'll pull that...
We've got five slides about a project for information that we are really excited about. Talked about the leadership of Chancellor Lane earlier, but this goes for a lot of reasons why we're really excited about presenting this to you today. And, okay, right here. Okay, thank you. So, this is... There we go. So, this is a P3 housing initiative. We've got five slides. This is a summary of what it would be. This is a public-private partnership, P3, where the foundation will play on the bottom a role as an intermediary, and you can read the reasons why it can play an important role in its role as an accelerator to help make SIU better. But we're looking right now, this would, the concept is about 898 beds, new beds, a community building, and four to five houses for special interest housing. And the way it would work, just quickly, interestingly, in 1966, for any of you who may have been around, the foundation was involved in building the Vocational Technical Institute in Cardiff. It is no longer there, but at the time, it was exciting. But go along with what we're presenting today. Get this thing to move. Oh, I got a point over there. So, here's what we're talking about, the sites, and this is Old Greek Row, 17 acres. And as we get into this, we talked about the role of the foundation. I do want to do a shout-out to Mark Owens, the head of facilities, Jeff Bergen, the head of Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs and head of housing, and all their colleagues. This is a team effort, collaborative effort, really excited about it. But these are, for many of you who've been on Old Greek Row, 17 buildings, only one remains in use, I mean, 13 buildings, 17 acres, and that's Collier Hall, where the foundation office is. It's going to be moved to the new Tadic Welcome Center. Dr. Mahoney, I believe, if it's true, in Collier Hall, the presidents of the system used to reside the office in Collier Hall. So, there's some history there, of course, but these are abandoned, boarded-up buildings, and we have an opportunity to take these down and replace them with a brand-new, whole-new living environment. Thousand beds. We're talking about the community building and four or five special interest homes, and right across from the SIU Simmons Law School. So, Trustee Simmons, this probably looks pretty good to you, doesn't it? Doesn't that look awesome? We think this could be a game changer, Chancellor Lane, for the institution. Get quickly, and just one last slide. This is, you like that little transition? There we go. Jerry liked that transition. Jerry didn't have slides, so you may get them the next time. But this is what the special interest homes would look like. We just think, as we bring this for your information today, from the ashes of Old Greek Row will rise. The new Saluki Building's pretty exciting, a thousand beds. So, the plan is to come back to you all in September with more design and construction. Put this for information, and to move this forward, it's going to require, Trustee Simmons, do we need, we don't need an action, do we, on this item? I don't know. Just, so we would go, can we go to Item Eight? Okay, if that's okay? Correct. So, to begin this, and we're looking, if possible, and it's a tight timeline for August 27 moving, and it coincides with some other things we want to do with housing on our campus. The goal has been to bring more and more of our students back on the campus. So, to begin to move this along, in the interim, we would need project approval from you all. The matter would require project approval for the demolition of selected structures located on Old Greek Row. And this matter also seeks approval for the granting of easements to the SIU University Foundation to allow the Foundation to demolish or contract for the demolition of the structures listed in this matter for which project approval is sought herein. The Foundation will put the money up to begin this, and we would seek your approval, Trustee Simmons, for this.
Is there a motion to place Board Agenda Item Z on the omnibus motion? It's our Item Eight.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Simmons.
Yes.
Connolly. Curtis.
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Chair, that concludes the business of the Architect and Design Committee.
Thank you. Let's take a 10-minute break and start promptly at, what would that be? 11?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock. Promptly at 10 o'clock. Promptly at ten o'clock. For the trustee for board meeting, we'd like to call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Abuzena. Connolly.
Present.
Curtis.
Present.
Gilbert.
Present.
Hightower.
Present.
Salger.
Present.
Simmons. Williams.
Present.
Thank you. I would like to announce that during yesterday's executive session meeting, the board approved for release the executive session meeting minutes excerpts for the period September twenty-fourth through February twenty-five. Those will be posted on the board's website. The next item of business is to approval, is to approve the minutes of the meeting of April sixteenth, seventeenth, twenty-twenty-six. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, twenty-five, pardon me. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Please call a roll.
Abuzena. Connolly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hightower.
Yes.
Salger.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
The minutes are approved. Next, we have trustee reports. Are there any trustee reports? Committee reports. Next, our report that the executive committee has not met between board meetings. Next item, public comments at our regular board meetings, thirty minutes will be reserved to receive comments or questions from members of the public and employees of the university. Speakers' comments or questions should not exceed five minutes. Persons wishing to speak shall contact the executive secretary of the board. The executive secretary of the board shall maintain a roster of those seeking to speak and shall call the speakers in order. Madam Secretary, do we have speakers today?
Yes, we do. We will begin with Michelle Barnes. After that, we will have Amanda French and Merrick Shavey, if you want to make your way down.
Good morning, Dean Cruz, members of the board, everyone in the audience and my colleagues. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak here today. My name is Michelle Barnes. I apologize, when I get passionate, I sometimes shed a few tears, but I'm going to do my very best to not do that. Anyway, I'm Michelle Barnes. I've been a registered nurse for thirty-six years now. The last nineteen of those years have been with SIU here at the Springfield campus. I'm here to respectfully advocate on behalf of my colleagues for the implementation of a longevity salary increase for our institution's dedicated employees. As I'm sure you are aware, longevity pay is a crucial tool in recognizing the commitment and sustained contributions of long-serving staff. It serves not only as a financial acknowledgement, but also as a symbol of institutional respect and goes a long way toward a successful retention strategy. At a time when inflation continues to affect everyday costs and when competing institutions are aggressively recruiting experienced professionals, an organization's ability to retain talent is being tested. While cost of living increases are of the utmost importance for the livelihood of all employees, longevity pay reflects a different, but equally vital value and benefit, loyalty and deep institutional knowledge. Employees who have dedicated five, ten, fifteen, twenty, even more years have invested not just time, but energy, relationships, and knowledge that's irreplaceable. Their presence ensures continuity for our students and our residents, mentorship for our new colleagues, and operational stability, but most importantly, for our patients. Patients feel comfortable when they walk into our clinics and they see a familiar face. It instantly puts them at ease. I am urging all of you to consider implementing a structured longevity pay schedule at key milestones, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, even more. Making increases meaningful, not symbolic, enough compensation that we feel valued, applying the policy equitably across all roles and classifications. I personally, along with many of my colleagues, were completely passed over approximately four years ago when longevity increase was implemented as a one-time percentage increase, but only for how long you had been in your current position. I had been with the school for fifteen years, but I had recently changed my title. I'm an RN, I was hired as an RN, and I'm still functioning as an RN, but my clinic location is different. But I was passed over along with many others, and I'll be very honest, I felt as if I was not valued at all in this organization. By recognizing the value of longevity pay not only as fair compensation, but as a strategy to investment in retention, increase morale, and create an organizational culture of fairness. When you demonstrate value to your employees, they are more likely to develop a level of loyalty, which will reduce turnover and the associated costs that go along with that. Sign-on bonuses could be a thing of the past. A fair cost of living increase and longevity compensation is not just a financial issue, it's a matter of institutional values. Let's be a place that says we see your years of service and we see you and we honor them. Don't you want to be a leader, not only in the education of our students and our residents, and mostly in the care of our patients, but in the value they have for their employees? Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Amanda French.
Good morning, Mr. Jerry and the board. I appreciate you taking your time to let me speak. Again, I will probably cry because I'm one of those emotional because I work in Peds. My name is Amanda French, I'm a vice president of Unit Two of the Local Three Seventy. I have been here with SIU for six years. I work again in the pediatric department, I'm a medical insurance specialist. I'm here to tell you a little bit about myself. I came here to SIU because I developed PTSD from Memorial Medical Center. My father-in-law made SIU sound like a family as he was a director of IT for thirty years before he retired from here. He sold me working here was family-oriented. Now, I'm a wife, I'm a mother of two beautiful children, I have an eleven-year-old and I have a seven-year-old. SIU currently is not my only job. I have four jobs to keep the cost of living of my family. I'm not only the one that is trying to keep up with the cost of living, there are forty, forty percent of our union members work two or more jobs. So with me having to continually work to maintain my livelihood, I ask myself, when do I have time to be a mom or a wife? I'm sure that some of you are parents. How would you feel if sometimes you have to choose working more than one job or choosing to be a parent? I'm losing valuable time with them. The cost of living has gotten so out of control, when I moved into my house in Rochester, my first bill for my electricity and gas was only a hundred and seventy-eight. I just paid my bill for my month of June, it was two hundred and sixty-three dollars. That's an eighty-four dollar jump. My current water bill has jumped. I have a child who has food allergies. I'm not able to just go to the store and just buy whatever I want. I have to make sure everything in my house is safe for him to eat or he goes into anaphylactic shock on me. So my grocery bill has now doubled within the last two years. You see, this is not because I'm going out and spending money on luxurious items. I can't even afford to take my kids to Disney. You guys have been probably able to take your children on luxurious vacations, I have not. My eleven-year-old has never been on a vacation. Because you know what? Every time I save up, something happens. Guess, last week, my battery went out on my car. I can't do anything about it, I had to change it. The two-point-five that is being offered and the one-time five-hundred longevity pay is what I would be getting for my years of service is not enough to sustain a livelihood household of four. Unit Two makes up seventy-five percent of our union, and every time we come to bargaining, we always get the short end of the deal. I'm not saying that our nursing staff isn't deserving or anything, but if it wasn't for the non-clinical medical assistants and LPN, we would not be having the volume of patients that we have. Unit Two staff workers wear many hats and we say nothing about it because this is great and good of the patients. A lot of us love our patients as a non-clinical. I will do anything for my patients, I will even stay late for my patients to make sure that they get their pre certs done. So my providers, my providers get paid. As you can see, I don't say SIU providers, my providers, because I love my providers. With everything that I have said, I ask you, do you have, do you know how you can help us here and stop job turnover? My answer, pay us a living wage so we don't have to work four jobs so I can watch my kids grow up and not have to worry about them asking where mom is.
Last speaker is Merrick Shavey.
Erwin Shavey. Sorry. It's okay, everyone does it. I'm going to be real honest here, I hate public speaking, super great to do this, I know. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. We're all here because we care deeply about the mission of SIU to advance health and improve lives through education, research, and patient care. That mission depends not only on physicians, researchers, administrators, but on the hundreds of lower-wage workers who support every part of the system. Medical assistants, techs, clerical staff, all of us. These individuals are often the first to arrive and the last to leave. They maintain our clinics, we run on time, we get appointment schedules, we get cussed at, screamed at. I had one coworker who had a red laser go on her shirt and she thought she was about to be shot. And for sixteen dollars an hour, how is that fair to anybody? Because I work in mental health and we have to continue and pick ourselves up and keep going. That's the daily life I live right now. We're essential. If you look up here, this is two percent of our union right here. This is a small number, there's about twenty of us, and that is only two percent of us. There's eight hundred more of us. And it, we are the lowest that we've been paid, fifteen dollars an hour. That is not a living wage anymore. We are still in, our wages are still what they were pre-COVID. We have not adapted to that. Our institution has grown and adapted to meet the changes of modern healthcare. Many of us are struggling, our wages have fallen behind. We're, I have a coworker who's been here twenty years and she makes twenty dollars an hour. That's completely unfair to me. She is here first one in the morning, last one to leave, make sure our doctors have everything they need, twenty dollars, and that's how we're thanking her. This is more than a financial concern, it's a matter of institutional values. If we pride ourselves on equality, community health, and respect for all people, then we must reflect those principles and how we compensate every member of our team. Providing a meaningful raise to our lower-paid employees is not just an ethical choice, is a strategic one. Fair pay improves retention, reduces turnover costs, increases job satisfaction, it strengthens the entire system. And actually, if you go online and look at our Indeed score for satisfaction, it is below, way below average because of how horrible our environments are, because we don't get backup, we don't get anything that we need. More importantly, it sends a clear message. We see your work, we value your role, and we want you to stay and thrive with us. The people who do the most physically demanding, emotionally exhausting, and often invisible work are asking for something very basic, to be able to support themselves and their families with dignity. Let us not ask them to carry the weight of our success while receiving the least in return. Let's align our compensation with the values we stand for, let's ensure that no one working full-time at SIU is left behind. Let's invest in the very people who make this institution work. And the one last piece that I'd like to leave you all with is that based upon my current salary, I'm an LPN, I'm going for my RN, but on my current salary, in order for me to save fifty thousand dollars, it's going to take me a hundred years, just based on my salary. I will be a hundred and twenty-eight years old, my daughter will, my two-year-old will be, honestly, I'm not going to do the math right now. My daughter will, my two-year-old will be, honestly, I'm not gonna do the math right now. But for you guys to save $150,000, how long is that gonna take? An hour a day? Not, clearly, not 100 years. And that is completely unfair. So I'd like to leave you with that to think on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for your attendance here today. The next order of business is, uh, business is executive office report, Chancellor Ling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a video that's, or not video, but PowerPoint. And we will be very brief, so, um, get right to it. Thank you. While this is pulling up, the first slide is gonna focus on our summer enrollment. And typically in the past, we have not really talked much about summer. We've not talked much about summer. Here we go. But we thought we better start talking about summer, because summer counts. When we look at our tuition revenue and we look at how we can make sure students are progressing from one semester to the next, a lot of students would go back home, but they would take their courses at other community colleges and then transfer it back in. So that's a lost opportunity for us. So we thought we'd change the narrative and really push summer to keep students either online with us in the summer when they go home, so they don't have to go to other schools, or just be in person on campus. And it's made a really big difference. So summer enrollment rises almost 15% since 2021. Thanks to our faculty, myself, the provost, Julianne, gotta give Julianne some credit as well. When we went through our collective bargaining agreements, our faculty were very understanding and realized the importance of summer, which allowed us to be a little more creative. And so you're seeing some results of that right here. I know 5,264 may not seem like a lot, but that's a lot for summer. And so again, a lot of effort that was put together by our administrative team, our faculty, and our staff, and so very thankful for those numbers. And it really helps us move into the fall. We'll have an update in September about how we look in the fall. As President, I always talk about, we're cautiously optimistic for fall, so we don't have all the numbers, we won't know that until the 10th class day, but our folks are working like crazy to make sure that we give students an opportunity. And you'll hear about a little bit of our Opportunity University here soon. Our next slide, I want to thank some of the folks that really, you talk about shared governance, you talk about how important it is to work together. We always like to say we're better together. But I want to highlight some of our new constituency folks that are gonna be joining us. I will say, Dr. Lee served a couple of terms as Faculty Senate President. I think officially, can we say publicly, yeah, he has accepted a position as a dean of the graduate school at North Dakota State, so great for him. You know, he's excited about that opportunity, we're excited for him, but he'll be moving on. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say, he's done a tremendous job, at least over the last couple of years as Faculty Senate President. You see the list of folks that are our new Faculty Senate President, 20-plus-year veteran at Southern, that is Dr. Maxum, he's gonna do a fantastic job. Very, uh, great faculty advocate, works very well with our administrative team, has a lot of great ideas, keeps us really, really busy and on our toes, which is a good thing. Our new, our Graduate Council Chair, Dr. Bender, Kelly Bender is the chair there. She'll do a fantastic job for us. Graduate Professional Student Council, new president coming in there with Timsina, is gonna do a great job. And then our undergraduate student government president, far right, that's Lydia Phelps. She is fantastic. And Hannah, you know you work very well with Lydia, and she's gonna do a great job. She's already hit the ground running with her platform and what she'd like to do. And our most important name up there is Hannah, you see Hannah, Student Trustee. We got you up there, Hannah, we didn't forget you. Two-time Student Trustee is doing an incredible job. So I wanted to take this time, as we're ending the year and beginning a new year, to really highlight how important it is to have these faculty and constituency heads working with us on a number of different items across the university. A lot of the things we're trying to implement, we go and check with our folks, we get their opinions, we get their feedback, we do the social engineering, and then we get our goals accomplished that way. So it is truly a team effort when it comes to that. This is the Dr. Hightower slide. We thought it would be very fitting to bring up Jeff Harmon. Jeff and his folks are doing an incredible job getting our messages out. We always say we don't want to be a best-kept secret. And so Jeff is definitely in that mindset. We want to make sure that, not that we're bragging or anything like that, but we don't want to be shy when it comes to some of the things that people really need to know about. What we're finding is when we get the information out, it really dispels some of the myths that people may have had through the years about enrollment or about admissions. And so it really is important to get these messages out, so people know. So Jeff, I'm gonna give Jeff the floor and kind of give him a chance to shine. Again, he's doing an incredible job with his team. Jeff?
Thank you, Chancellor, and thank you trustees for a minute of your time. So before I talk about the slide, I almost forgot to mention, we really do have a new logo. So if you're wondering, what is that, what is this thing? We put it together as a sort of takeover logo, and once we let the cat out of the bag, we really, people loved it, it took over the campus community. And we found out, well, I guess we're not gonna be able to run away from this one, so we, let's just adopt it. So we're loving it, everybody loves it. I think you're gonna have a pin given to you today to, that you'll wear every day, of course, right? No, it'll be a lot of fun. So, you know, the thing that we really work on is delivering the right message to the right audience at the right time. And we do a pretty good job of that. But I need to shout out, give a shout out to Wendell Williams and his team, because enrollment marketing, enrollment management, and marketing being together as tight as we are is really what's helped us be successful. We're on the same page, our teams are very tight, very collaborative. So I really appreciate that partnership. So this slide really just talks about our channels, tactics, some messaging and so forth. The channels we use, we try everything, and we're not that unique, I don't think, in this space. But we use a lot of streaming media, a lot of web ads, a lot of search engine ads, which are our highest, get our highest engagement, we love those. We also do a lot of billboards, not a lot, I shouldn't say. A little jealous of SIUE at times, I'm kidding. When I drive through St. Louis, I want a couple more over there. We are going to enhance the one we've got at Busch Stadium with hopefully having this Saluki dog be jumping off in 3D. So we'll see how that goes, I hope it'll be fantastic. A lot of email, a lot of texts, a lot of print. The messaging we use right now is pretty much about R1, the brand in general. Recruitment is always ongoing. Registration right now for fall is big, and then retention, Saluki commitment, and so much more. So we're using all these different messages across all these channels. We track and see which ones work the best. We'll put two ads out with the same similar message, one might work a lot better. We cancel the other ad and move forward that way. So we're doing that every week. One thing I want to mention is, one of our favorite tactics is search engine ads on Google for program-specific ads, program-specific advertising. So when you, you know, we put our, if someone searches for an SIU program or program that we offer, it'll show up in the top three, you know, advertisements or top three on their organic listings. And those are your highest intent audience right there. So if someone searches for your product and they're gonna, they're gonna see exactly what they're looking for, click on it, maybe inquire, apply, enroll, et cetera. We do try to, we are fair, we don't bid on keywords on other institutions' programs and then show our ad. That's what happens on Amazon and Walmart and so forth. You can see that we're searching for products and you end up going to Amazon and find out, well, that product's not here. Well, that's not the case with us, we're being truthful on it. So really happy with that. On the right, you can see some of the imagery, some of the bold messaging we're using now. The five-state lines, that's about no out-of-state tuition. You can see that the family, we market tuition-free under $103,000. Family income under 103 qualifies you for most likely no tuition and no fees. R1 for everyone, top-level research university for you. Those are just some of the examples of the things we're putting out there right now. Couple new things real quick. The, I told you about the Bush billboard. We're gonna be putting some ads in O'Hare on 500,000 impressions a month. And I haven't even told the Chancellor this yet, but we're gonna take over O'Hare a little bit on all the screens that they have in there. And you probably wonder about geography. We pretty much market in Illinois, Missouri, Tennessee, Texas, Kentucky. Probably expanding a little bit more toward Indianapolis next year, and we'll track that and see how that works and then adjust accordingly. Any questions?
Great. You, Josh? One piece, we mentioned R1 a lot. But I think what's most exciting, President and I were talking about this in DC, is that we're also designated as an Opportunity University. And Dr. Hightower, why that's important, really from what your comments were yesterday with attracting students from various socioeconomic backgrounds, particularly underrepresented backgrounds, lower socioeconomic backgrounds. Most R1s that you'll see across the country, good luck trying to get students into those institutions. It's gonna be extremely difficult, not at Southern Illinois University Carbondale. So we will not increase any type of admission requirement that makes it harder for students to get to us, whether they're from urban or rural backgrounds. Beauty of it, if you see the map on the left, those are examples. There are only 20 other Opportunity Universities in the country. So we're in really good company. When you look at some of these universities that are spread across the country, to be R1 and still provide access is the key. And we think that's a great selling point for us. So higher access leads to higher earnings. Again, this is a chance for a student that comes to us to take their family to new heights. So we're really excited to have that designation. Probably more important to have that, quite frankly, than the R1. I mean, that's, faculty probably jump on me about it. So it really comes down to Carnegie. Classification came out with this new sort of structure that placed universities in these categories based on their populations that they serve, right? And they looked at our unique population and how we accept students at those marks, and then how they actually leave and go and attain jobs, right? And move themselves to higher levels. So that's what I'm most excited about, is this piece right here. Again, we talk a lot about R1, but that's a game changer, and it allows students to get there. I think in my own state back in Texas, good luck trying to get into A&amp;M and UT Austin. Those are not Opportunity Universities there, because they're not taking as, the students, as many students as probably they could or should. Our next slide, this should be my last, uh-oh, went right by it. You have a packet in front of you on your desk. I mentioned that slide earlier about our faculty and leads and our constituency council leads. QR code here, if you scan that, it's a lot easier. You can keep it on your phone if you don't want to take all the paper with you. But this gives you an idea about our progress report. This Imagine 2030 links directly to our system plan here at the system office with Dr. Mahoney and his team's plan, so we're well-connected. But in that, you will really get an idea about the things that we're accomplishing. And we always love talking about goals, but we love talking more about, have we accomplished anything? You know, what have we actually achieved? And that report will give you a really good idea about the success we're having in our five pillars, student success and engagement, academic innovation, and research, diversity, equity, and inclusion, branding, partnerships, and sustainability. Those are our top five pillars. Everybody at the institution is focused on those five. We have five years remaining, 2025 is here. We've got five years, actually four and some change, remaining. And we're gonna be very aggressive in this next four and a half years, because we have some marks we still need to hit. In enrollment, different marks in different areas. And so you'll hear us really talking about this going forward. So that, I think, is my last slide and concludes the presentation, and thank you.
Excellent. Dean Cruz.
You need to have. Let's see here. There we go. So I'm gonna talk about one thing today, and it's gonna complement the presentations by Dr. Kelly Weddington and the nursing students yesterday, and Dr. Connie Spurlock and the Office of Community Engagement. For the past 10 years, we've had a new kind of professional at the SIU School of Medicine, the community health worker. They've been, become a vital part of what we do. And as you see here, they are a big part of a solution to a really major problem in this country. The community health workers link people and communities to health and social services. The communities they serve are almost always low-income with large numbers of marginalized populations and very medically vulnerable people. They address mistrust in the community with cultural understanding and build trust by engaging leaders and helping the communities and the people to make decisions about health and social services themselves. You will see that a disproportionate number of the people that they serve are women and children, and that's important, as you'll see later. They also have become the ultimate care coordinators, and you'll see why that's important too. So I said there's a big problem, so I'm gonna define that fairly quickly and then get down to what they do. I think this might be the first in several presentations that you might hear. So, oh, there we go. So first of all, the state of the United States healthcare in 2008. In the year 2000, the United States had the highest spending in the world on healthcare and was about at the middle of the pack in healthcare outcomes among industrialized nations. Sometimes we call 2000 to 2008 the decade of shame, even though it's not quite a decade, because it was in that decade when, number one, quality, population-based healthcare outcomes did not keep up with the rest of the world, it got worse. Spending on healthcare rose very rapidly, and the gap between the US and any other nation was bigger. The access worsened rapidly, we had 50 million people who were uninsured in 2008. The health equity was poor for all marginalized population, but particularly in marginalized population for women of childbearing age and children. And there was a very low primary care choice and payment. Getting worse in the United States for medical students, physician assistants, nurse practitioners too. Okay. Thankfully, Barbara Starfield in 2004, with her colleagues that you see at the bottom of the slide, for industrialized nations, defined the characteristics of effective healthcare systems that improved healthcare outcomes and lowered per capita cost. Number one, regional healthcare assessment and allocation based on that. The United States has never done that, even though it was authorized by the ACA, it was never appropriated. Number two, universal access guaranteed by a publicly accountable body. With the ACA, we dropped from 50 to 21 million uninsured. We're back up to about 28 million uninsured now, but that percentage of our population is still the worst among industrialized nations. High degree of insurance regulation, we are the lowest in the world. Out-of-pocket expensive, expenses, they determined that there should be no out-of-pocket expenses, copays, or deductibles for primary care, mental health, or catastrophic care to get the best outcomes and lowest costs. We don't do that. Narrow range of physician income, the United States has the highest. High supply of primary care, we have the lowest. Primary care, usual source of comprehensive longitudinal care, actually is where community health workers fit in and might be the most powerful of these seven elements described by Starfield. Whoops, went too far. Okay. So the elements of the patient-centered medical home that improve outcomes and lower costs, you see the first three there, I'm gonna start with number four. Coordinated or integrated care. I called the community health workers the ultimate care coordinators. They found in their research that when care was coordinated within the practice and within the community, that the other three, family orientation, community orientation, and cultural competence naturally followed. So then, from 2010 to 2015, actually, the SIU School of Medicine was a leader in defining what are the most effective elements of coordinated care. And so we found the two things that rose to the top are the ones that are on the top. First, finding the high-risk, high-cost patients, who were also mostly in the marginalized population, a very effective program. Hotspotting the top 1%. In coordination with our hospital partners, we were able to start a hotspotting program and became one of four medical schools in the nation that taught the other medical schools to do that. We paid a lot of attention to the top 10%, and we found then that the significant element that pulled all this together was the community health workers. So Tracy Smith, doctor of nursing practice. So Tracy Smith, Doctor of Nursing Practice from SIU, and 20 medical students began the hotspotting program. They found that a lot of the hot-spotted people were in the Enos Park neighborhood. And so with them sitting at the table and with Memorial Hospital and St. John's Hospital contributing money and time and people and engaging other social service organizations, we started the Enos Park Access Program. 2,500 people. It's in that program when we were able to clearly define what the community health workers did. After two years, the people in that community, 95% had a primary care visit, 55% more have health insurance, 35% had a decrease in emergency use, 25% increase in physical health index. And on the social side, 25% decrease in police calls, 70% increase in employment, and a significant improvement in homelessness, in homelessness, actually. So this was the real springboard. Actually, Tracy's no longer with us, as you see. She's the current Director of Community Health at the Illinois Public Health Association. We're proud of that, actually. Okay. Now, in the past three years, Sri Tripathi, who is a professor of pediatrics and a statistician, has helped us study this program significantly with the 2,709 patients that the community health workers have engaged. And you see all of these areas where they can get a score and see the percentage of patients improve from the first to the last visit through the care of community health workers. Above the top red line, 40% of patients improve or more for parenting skills, adult education, children's education, physical safety, safety in childcare. More than 30% for employment, life skills, housing, healthcare insurance, food, community involvement, mental health, substance use, transportation. I won't read all of them. It's just an impressive slide. And this is just the tip of the iceberg on the data that we're gathering now under the direction of Dr. Tripathi. It's really, really pretty amazing stuff. Whoops. And so here's the bottom line, really on the ground again. The healthcare workers have increased medical visits. They've improved access. They've increased the appointment keep rate. That's a measure of trust. They've decreased emergency room use. That's a measure of quality and cost. They've increased the number who have health insurance. That's a measure of access and peace of mind. They have decreased hospital charges. That's a measure of cost efficiency and quality. They have increased the housing of homelessness. And decreased police calls and increased employment and income meeting societal needs. So now, we currently employed in our Office of Community Health Work, 38. We train about 10 community health workers a year. We are part of the ECHO Program Extension for Community Healthcare Outcomes through the University of New Mexico, trained 174 across the globe. And then the Illinois Public Health Association, that Tracy Smith now heads, her office trains annually more than 2,000 community health workers. And also Illinois Primary Healthcare Association, who we have connections with, trains some as well. So I just want to give recognition to some of the people through the years who really make this happen. Now, on your right is Iris Wesley, the CEO of Centers for Family Medicine, FQHC. I put her up there. She's been really instrumental. But there are a host of people who made that happen in this department. Then, when things were centralized a bit, Lori Williams, Associate Provost for External Relations, headed that up. Now, this program is in the Office of the Executive Associate Dean, Chris McDowell. And the director now, who's helped really bring this program forward to what you saw today, is Erin Jones. So she's doing just, you know, a really great job with that. So I'm going to go back a couple of slides and finish here. I just wanted to say that I think this goes along very well with some of the things that the SIU system has been trying to do. First, Dean Bob Morgan of Health and Human Sciences, the nursing program, the social work program, radiology tech, sonographers. It's going to link there very, very well. It'll link very well with our Office of Rural Health and Social Service Development in Carbondale as well. In the Metro East area, again, Connie Sperlock and the Office of Community Engagement. The things we heard yesterday about digital equity, clean energy, population-based research, it'll be perfect for a comprehensive program here. And then SIU Edwardsville itself, nursing and pharmacy and the dental school there. I think we can all get on board for the health and for the other social aspects that are being linked together here for this community engagement. So, thank you. Oh, one thing I do want to mention. Also, from the Lausanne Committee on Medical Education, we got notification at the med school that we got full six-year accreditation with no modifier. So we're very proud of that as well. So, yeah. There you go.
Thank you. Moving on, Chancellor Meier.
Good morning, thank you. I'm going to hope my voice holds up for a brief presentation. I always like to start with what I believe is the most important thing we do at SIUE, and that is transform the lives of young people. We give them an opportunity, as you know, to earn a high-quality, affordable degree. And we take a lot of pride in curating commencement for these families. So just a short while ago, maybe a month ago, we had the opportunity to confer nearly 2,300 degrees on May 9th and 10th. We're really proud to say that SIUE remains the number-one producer of bachelor's degrees, not only in the Metro East, but also in metropolitan St. Louis. We like to say to the business community in St. Louis that SIUE is defining the workforce of the future in that metropolitan. And so we're very proud of that as we go forward. Now, oftentimes, commencement is about the current generation of graduates. But as you know, we also have our golden graduates participate in commencement. So thank you, Trustee Hightower, Trustee Curtis. I know you all have engaged those communities. I want to tell you just about one of those golden graduates. So the recognition is for alumni who graduated 50 years or more from SIUE, and it's always a point of pride for our commencement ceremonies. The person you see here on the screen is Ms. Joan Griffin, who 60 years ago was the first woman to earn a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration and General Accounting. 60 years ago, she missed the commencement ceremony in 1965 because she was a new mother. But 60 years later, she returned to finally have the opportunity to attend commencement and to cross the stage to receive her diploma in person. All four of her children, including that firstborn, who was the culprit for the first graduation ceremony, were there to witness her cross the commencement stage, which was very special. The second thing that I'll mention just quickly is One Day, One SIUE. This is the fourth year for One Day, One SIUE. And one of the features for that annual day of dedicated giving is we typically partner with a community member or an organization. As a part of the recognition of the community partner, it's the distinguished community leader. This year, it happened to be Curtis Francois, who you see on the screen, who is the owner and president of Worldwide Technology Raceway, which is sort of in our backyard. We had a wonderful event on the Stratton Quad, nearly perfect weather, which is always a variable for an outdoor event. More than 1,500 students, staff, faculty, supporters in attendance with the motorsport theme. So you don't see a picture of the quad here, but you have to imagine checker flags, race car-inspired treats. I don't know how our dining team were able to pull that off. But also an Indy car that was placed in the quad, which was pretty cool. I will share with you, some of the community partners also not only include Worldwide Technology, but also Missouri, American Water, Ameren Illinois, and the Stewart Family Foundation are also community partners that we are engaging. I'm very pleased to have Curtis Francois at this event. Partnering with the university in this way is important for SIUE and important for the community. I'll expand a little bit later on this. In the fourth year, it's one of the few things at SIUE that I can say that I've seen from beginning and to this current point. The growth has been tremendous. We started four years ago. I think the final tally for this past year was $2.9 million. To raise that in a single day of dedicated giving is remarkable. The green caps that you see here were sort of areas where we're exceeding the goal that we established. And so each year, we challenge ourselves. I always have mentioned, this is not just about the number, it's also about engagement. So one of the things that we track in addition to the number is the level of engagement with alumni, community members, and individuals in our own university community who are participating in One Day, One SIUE. So this is something that we're very proud of, and we hope to continue to see sustainable growth in the years to come. Now, the foundation team is really nervous about the goal for the next year, as they should be. But we're going to be sufficiently ambitious and try to hit that number. I think the next slide is a brief projection for fall enrollment. I think the phrase of the day is cautiously optimistic. We are also, I think I've mentioned in previous presentations, this has become more difficult to do. The dynamics are just different today, and it makes it very difficult to project fall enrollment. But on the screen here, you'll see that we're expecting to have growth in undergraduates, first-time students, and transfer students. Also, and students for whom it will be their first time in college, new transfer head count. But we are expecting declines in new graduate and international student populations. Probably not a surprise, it's something that we're concerned about. When you put all of this together, you account for attrition. I think we're expected to grow by about 3% this fall, which will be exciting, especially given the circumstances. I want to just address the international students and the graduate student environment. We have continued to press forward with establishing partnership agreements, both internationally, not only in Central and South America, but also in China, with the expectation that this season will change in terms of visa approvals or revocation. Part of our challenge today is that students who have left the country to go home for the summer, the prospect of returning is interesting. And new visa approvals, of course, is a big question mark for our international partners. So what you see here on the screen is our provost seated next to the president of the University of Central Ecuador, signing an agreement for our first-ever dual-degree program and for our MBA program, the Masters in Business Administration. This is a milestone for both institutions. It's the first dual-degree program for the MBA, for SIUE, and for the University of Central Ecuador. It's the first agreement with any US institution. And so we're pleased to have these individuals on our campus signing these agreements. Some of you know that I spent a couple of weeks this June in China, which is on the slide there. There you go. To solidify some of the existing partnerships that we have in place. And so I don't have to tell you here, I don't want to be overtly political in any way in this meeting, but the environment is more or less hostile, depending on the country and what you're arriving from. And so many of our Chinese partners are concerned about the environment, not just at SIUE, but lots of American institutions today. And so I'm pleased to report that my visit to China was not just the one-to-one program. We've got a dual-degree program with the Chinese partner where the students are earning a degree both from their home institution in China and also SIUE. And so the top picture there, there is a commencement ceremony in China for those students, which I had to travel with full regalia to participate in this ceremony for them. The students that you see in T-shirts are students who will be a part of the incoming cohort in that one-to-one program. And then the new agreements that we're signing with our Chinese counterparts in the lower right corner there. So we're pressing ahead with the expectation that we're going to be able to move students right across the ocean to participate in some of these programs. So I've talked a little bit about the students who are graduating. I want to talk about the students who are going to arrive this fall. It's two of the most exciting times at SIUE. I always say it's the best of times. What you see here is convocation on the screen. So we have, as an institution, made a much bigger deal about students arriving. And so the week before classes start at SIUE, we not only move them in, but there's Welcome Week, which concludes with this procession after convocation from the Vidalia Bean Center to the quad where they're going to take this photo. We want to invite trustees to be a part of convocation this fall, so you'll get an invitation. But I want to just say, it's an opportunity to orient them academically to the institution. Our provost is here, has done a really wonderful job of exposing students to their academic major even before their first class. So their academic sessions, where they're meeting with faculty before classes start, which has really led to their success in the first year of college, which is really exciting. I will also say about this cohort, now, I want to take you back to this community partnership with Curtis Francois and the Worldwide Technology Raceway. In establishing this partnership, Curtis Francois has extended an invitation for the entire first-year cohort to attend the Enjoy Illinois NASCAR Cup Series that will happen in September. So just a few weeks after they begin classes, they will go as a cohort to the raceway as a university community, which will be really exciting. So they'll have free admission to the race. We'll transport them from campus to the raceway and back. They've got exclusive SIUE apparel for the race day. They'll have access to the post-race concert and behind-the-scenes tours for the raceway, which will be really exciting. The last couple of slides that I'll mention quickly. Maybe the tornadoes that touched down in St. Louis have been overshadowed by the recent tragedy of the floods in Texas. But many of you all know that there were some communities in our region that were devastated by the May 16th tornado that touched down in St. Louis. The only thing I will say here is that our community partners called, and we have responded, and we are responding. I had a call from the Urban League of Metropolitan St. Louis. There are other community organizations that we're partnering with, asking specifically for SIUE to support the recovery efforts. And what you see here, pictures of our students, our staff members, who have responded in partnership with community organizations to provide support to our community members. We're very proud of that. This is an ongoing effort, but really proud of our ability to respond institutionally. The last thing I'll mention, and maybe one of the most important in this update, is accreditation and institutional accreditation. Some of you all know SIUE is accredited by the Higher Learning Commission, or HLC. In March 31st through April 1st, we had the peer review site team at SIUE to check us out. And the group of folks that you see here on the screen are the individuals responsible for organizing that site visit. They did a wonderful job. I am very pleased to say that SIUE has received notice that the Higher Learning Commission has reaffirmed SIUE's institutional accreditation. The peer review team found no areas of concern, and that they have confirmed that SIUE fully meets all five criteria for accreditation, including all core components and federal compliance standards. This is a really big deal. I want to congratulate our provost, who is there, who has worked very hard to get us prepared for the visit. This does not happen by accident. I have participated in accreditation across lots of bodies. To have this kind of outcome after a site visit is really remarkable. And so we've got a lot of people And so we've got a lot of people, I won't name them all, on our university campus who have worked to prepare us for this visit. If you have an opportunity to look at the report, it commends both the team and SIUE's efforts to respond to this moment, given the environment, some of the institutional pressures that universities now face. And so we're really proud. I am sharing the news here first. An announcement will go to the university community this afternoon, and you all will get a second invitation from SIUE, because we're going to celebrate this victory as a university community. That concludes my report.
Thank you. President Mahoney.
Yeah, we'll say earlier in my career, I was in charge of accreditation for the University of Louisville and went through preparing for one of those visits. And it is not an easy task. I'm happy that I never have to be the head of that ever again, but I appreciate everybody who does all the work on that. I also want to say too, for those who haven't had an opportunity to participate, there is a lot of really enjoyable things to do at Welcome Weekend at both campuses. One of the nice things about being Assistant President is I get to do a little bit of both. So I will, for the third year in a row, be at the convocation at Edwardsville, and then I would speed to Carbondale to get there in time for their Friday night activities, which, both of which are really fantastic and a great way to kick off the school year. Every year, we actually provide an update on our strategic plan. So I've asked Courtney Breckenridge, whoever sees all the reporting on the plan, to present an update today.
And I probably just need to hit next, huh? It's been tricky today. Thank you. All right. I may have to say, next slide, I'm apparently failing at the technology today. Oh, point that way. Okay, I can handle that. All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to share this year's System Strategic Plan Report. The dashboard and this report right here in front of you are very much a collaborative effort and the reflection of collaborative efforts across the system office and individual campuses. I want to recognize the hard work and dedication of the implementation team chairs and members, and give a special thanks to Stephanie Cullen, Katie Sheehan, Carrie Butts-Wilmsmeyer, Julie Lindsay, and of course, Vice President Gupchuk. This fiscal year '25 is the midpoint in our current five-year plan, and is a moment to reflect on how far we've come and where we're headed. The SIU System Strategic Plan is more than a document. It's a collective commitment to student success, regional service, and institutional innovation. This vision is brought to life every day by our campuses, our teams, and our communities. In 2024, we completed a full review of all six strategic goals. Each implementation team examined objectives, updated their metrics, and clarified benchmarks. This wasn't about starting over. This was a tightening of alignment to make sure the plan continues to reflect both system-wide priorities and campus-level activities. Here's a snapshot of how these goals are translating into results. We've seen a 40% increase in online shared courses, which means students have flexibility across campuses. We've seen a 5.8% enrollment increase among Black, African-American, and Latinx students. That's system-wide progress on equity and inclusion. And we're now supporting community projects that span over 4,700 square miles across Illinois, a reflection of our growing community impact infrastructure. That impact continues across our remaining goals. Both SIUC and SIUE are ranked in the top third of research institutions nationwide. Our faculty and staff are staying, with an average tenure of 12.4 years across the system, showing that we're investing in people and in our culture. And in 2024, the SIU system received two rating agency upgrades, a direct reflection of the sound financial management and long-term planning our system has worked hard to implement. We're also seeing momentum in new strategic initiatives that reflect our shared vision. The AI Task Force is one example. Campuses are exploring AI in teaching, research, and operations, while we ensure coordination and ethical standards at the system level. Transfer initiatives are reducing friction and expanding access for students, especially through the continued growth of our shared course exchange. And finally, the Federated ID System is a great example of backend integration that supports secure, simplified access across our institutions. These efforts reflect our overall strategic plan implementation, locally-led and system-supported. This update closes the recalibration phase of the strategic plan process. Now we're turning toward a full update of the strategic plan moving forward. That process will begin this fall with a formal review of institutional priorities and gaps, targeted stakeholder engagement and listening sessions, and a collaborative effort to reimagine our goals for 2026 and beyond. We'll continue to build on what's working and make space for what's next. So thank you again for your leadership and support. This work is deeply collaborative, and the progress you've seen today is the result of hundreds of people working across the system to ensure results. We look forward to continuing this next phase of strategic growth and innovation. Thank you.
This is outstanding, and I'll ask the same question. To whom are we communicating this to?
Many sources as we can, but we definitely get it to our legislators. That is one of the key things. So the document that we put together has really been valuable in communicating to both our state and federal legislators about what we're doing, what our priorities are, all of that. So it's been particularly helpful in a lot of those contacts and business.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Yeah, a couple of things. Oh, yes. So I want to talk in a second just about some of that outreach at the federal level and some of the things that are happening at the federal level. But before I do that, I want to follow up on one of the things that Courtney talked about. You know, for those who are new to the board, this strategic planning process that we did a few years ago was really the first time we brought everybody together in a highly collaborative process to put together a strategic plan in the history of SIU. We are now doing an update, and again, we'll do a very collaborative, engage people from all the campuses. So there's a lot more buy-in to what we develop. And really have, in its implementation, have had so many people involved in having a hand in what we're doing. And that's been a real difference for us, and it's been part of the success. So what I'm going to talk about a little bit is, you know, one of the things we continue to do is work on our federal relations. And this year, we just happened to get lucky. APLU, which is an organization that SIU is a part of, that represents the public and land-grant universities, was in Washington, D.C., so we tacked on a visit with Congressman Boss, Senator Durbin, Senator Duckworth, met with some of our alumni while we were there as well. While we were there, it was an opportunity too for us to talk with other presidents. Chancellor Laine and I were both there together. And this was before the reconciliation bill was passed, but we did get an update on where it was, and it was close enough at that point to kind of know what I think was going to happen if they went with the Senate version, which is what ended up happening. So I'll talk about that a little bit, but we also talked with presidents about some of the other challenges that institutions are facing. So when you look at the reconciliation bill, what the Senate passed and what was ultimately passed by the House was certainly better than what the House originally had proposed. That would have had more of an impact, both on our students and on our institutions, in several different ways. But there are still some issues in there. One of the things is, there's a new accountability process that they're looking at, which basically says, and it's kind of related to what Chancellor Laine was talking about, the idea of higher earnings. And what they're looking at is, are our undergraduates earning more than those with a high school degree? In other words, there's value added with the degree. That is not a concern for us, nor most of the institutions. That generally is the case. We've talked for years about how much value, in the long term, a college degree provides for people. The issue is, at the graduate level, they're going to look at individual programs and compare their earnings versus those of undergraduates generally. There is two particular areas, one of which Dean Cruz highlighted in his report, and one of those is social workers. Those with their Masters in Social Work generally do not earn more than the average undergraduate, because the average undergraduate includes engineering, business, all of those things. So they will fall under that threshold. The other is education, because we don't pay our teachers well enough. Those with a Masters in Education tend not to make more than the average undergraduate. And that's true at our institution. It's true, frankly, at most institutions. What they have in the legislation is, they would then lose eligibility for some of the loan programs and other things. So it would make it very difficult for any student who needed financial support to get through those programs to get through those programs, and likely impact the enrollment and also the workforce. And social work is certainly an area where we need more employees, and so there's some real concern with that. I am married to a licensed clinical social worker, so I'm quite aware of the very low pay that social workers get. That has been an issue for a very, very long time. So that's one issue that we have concern. Another is a cap on how much students can borrow. For most of our students, particularly given how much we have controlled the cost of education, if you're looking at our undergraduate students, it's not a significant issue. It's much more of an issue for graduate and professional students. Graduate students are capped at $20,500 a year. Professional students are $50,000 a year. But there's also a max cap of $100,000 for graduate students and $200,000 for professional students. Again, graduate students tends to vary whether they're on graduate assistance or not, how much they need to borrow. But at $200,000, that is below what the average debt is for a lot of medical school and dental school graduates. It doesn't mean, given the high interest in both those programs, we wouldn't be able to fill classes, but it would change who could go into those classes. It will have, obviously, a negative effect on those with the greatest need. It also sets a max aggregate borrowing for a lifetime at a little over $250,000. What that means is, for students maybe who went to a more expensive undergraduate institution or got a Master's degree in order to prepare themselves for medical and dental education, will also have issues staying under that cap. And I think particularly of our med prep program, that many of those students may borrow more because of that additional education. So there's lots of concerns on that. That doesn't, again, necessarily affect us financially as much, but it certainly affects the makeup of our student body. I will say, there's other caps on loans, parent-plus loans, but those frankly will probably affect private institutions more than they will affect us. The caps are not that low that, yeah, they're not that low that they would likely affect us. It does allow us to set lower loan limits for certain programs. We'll be interested to see how that works, but not above what the loan limits are nationally. It changes some of the Pell Grant eligibility. I will say, some of which is good, some of which may not be good. One of the things it does relative to athletics, athletes who get the full cost of attendance and qualify for Pell Grants were also getting Pell Grants on top of that. Tommy Tuberville, who's a senator but former football coach, didn't think that was a good idea. So they actually have changed, you can't do that. You can't get above the full cost of attendance and use Pell Grant beyond that. So that was one of the changes. Again, doesn't affect as large of a number of students. One of the things I think that was good, and this particularly impacts us in our agriculture program, when they redid the federal financial aid a couple of years ago, they started to count farm assets as part of their assets. What that meant for a lot of farm families that don't really have a lot of disposable income, their property is worth a lot. And therefore, their assets made them look like they could afford far more for their child's education than they can. They have taken that out. So that will be a big help to our ag program, to our farm families. So there's something I'm happy about. That's probably one of the big ones I'm happy about. I think that was a great change for everybody. There was also designated agricultural research infrastructure of about $125 million going forward between fiscal year '26 and '34, so $126 million, $25 million per year. Again, given our role in agriculture, particularly at Carbondale, that has some potential benefits. So we'll certainly work with Congressman Boss and our senators and others on trying to see what we can do to access some of that. That is all related to the reconciliation bill. I will say, oh, sorry, the other thing too, is obviously the changes in Medicaid and cost of ACA and other ways of getting health insurance. That is going to have a dramatic effect on our medical school and our clinical outreach. So less, again, related to our education, but definitely an impact there. Jerry shared a very good note. Dean Cruz said a good note that kind of outlined, we're looking at it, trying to figure out what that will be. Some of that will be longer-term where its impact is, but it certainly will be impactful for anybody who's providing care. So that's another concern. When we were talking with the presidents, in addition to all of those issues, I think the biggest things that came up in the meeting was, one, the international students, which Chancellor Minor just indicated before. I think everybody is expecting international student enrollment to be down this year. Right now, we're, I think, down about 13.5% at both institutions compared to where we were last year. And international students is a late-arriving crowd, so usually get 30% to 40% of those in the last month. So we won't have a real good sense of that. So our cautiously optimistic would be a little less cautious if our international enrollment was where it typically is. And that's just, again, a reality we're all dealing with. They also were very concerned with funding related to research, and given our status as research institutions, this certainly affects us. There is, you've may have seen a lot about the FNA rates coming down to 15%, which would be pretty catastrophic for every institution and its ability to support research. There is an alternative proposal that's been developed and is being presented that seems to have some bipartisan support. It may be some loss from where we are, but may not be as, again, significant as the other one. But the other issue is with grants that are either being taken away, which frankly hasn't affected us as much as some institutions, but also grants not being dispersed or just being canceled when we put in grant applications. Dr. Bryce Spurlock talked about several of those yesterday. That is not at all unusual. So one of the presidents at the meeting, when I was talking with him, said, "I'm less concerned about fiscal '26, more about fiscal '27," that this is going to be a longer-term impact. So I just share all of that to let you know, A, that we are monitoring all of this. Actually, on another webinar this afternoon about all of this, to try to make sure we're as informed as possible. But that, again, there will be some fiscal impact, and we will have to figure out how to continue to be a high-access institution across all of our programs with some of the challenges with loans and other things. So that's my update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the outstanding update, and thank you for the great job you're doing to keep us updated on what is happening across the country. Moving on, our next item is the call for the omnibus motion. The trustees have had approximately, somebody say something, okay, have had approximately 10 days to study the items on the agenda. A certain number, certain number are routine, are self-explanatory. So as to save time, we act upon them in one motion and vote. Madam Secretary, please read the items suggested for the omnibus motion.
The omnibus motion will include Board Agenda Items G through X and Board Agenda Item Z.
Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to approve the items for the omnibus motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Abuzena. Connolly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hightower.
Yes.
Salger.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
I declare the motion to approve the omnibus motion has passed. Board Agenda Item F, Report of Public Orders, Public Purchase Orders and Contracts, March, April, and May '25. SIU Carbondale, will we have a vote on that separately? How is that going to be handled separately? Okay, okay. Do I have a motion to approve this item?
Don't move.
Second.
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 Okay, I'm sorry. Call the roll.
Abuzena. Connolly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Epstein.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hightower.
Yes.
Salger.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
I declare a motion to have passed. Next move item Y, the approval to grant reciprocal drainage easement to Memorial Medical Center School of Medicine, SIU Carbondale. Will we vote on, will be voted on separately? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, call the roll.
Abuzena. Connolly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Epstein.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hightower.
Yes.
Salger.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
I declare a motion to have passed. Next, the board has two honorary resolutions. The first deals with Kenneth B. Busby. Whereas Kenneth B. Busby was born and raised in Anna, Illinois, and graduated from Anna Jones for High School, whereas he then enrolled at SIU Carbondale, where he subsequently earned a BA with a major in radio television and later received a Master's Degree in Political Science. science. Whereas Mr. Busby was a proud member of the United States Marine Corps, rising to the rank of Lieutenant Colonel at the U.S. Marine Corps Reserves, whereas Mr. Busby was first elected to the Illinois State Senate in 1972, where he served through 1984. Whereas in the Illinois State Senate, Senator Busby was the Chair of the Senate Appropriations Committee and was widely recognized and respected for his effective advocacy for higher education in general and for needs of Southern Illinois University in particular. Whereas after he left the Illinois State Senate, he continued to serve Southern Illinois University as a dedicated Saluki sports supporter and served as a member of the SIU Alumni Association Board of Directors from 2016 to 2022. Whereas at the SIU Spring '25 graduation ceremonies, Mr. Busby witnessed the graduation of his granddaughter, Kelsey, thus joining his wife Betty, their son Brent, daughter Kendra, and granddaughter Kylie, all of whom have degrees from SIU. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees in a regular meeting assembled that the life and service of former Illinois State Senator Kenneth B. Busby be formally recognized. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees expresses its profound appreciation for Mr. Busby's dedication and invaluable contributions to the state of Illinois, the Southern Illinois region, and Southern Illinois University. Is there any discussion?
I would like to say something, Dr. Hightower. I've known Senator Busby for over 60 years. He's been a family friend. He succeeded my father in the Senate, and as Chairman of the Appropriations Committee, he kept the money flowing during the growth and development of not only Carbondale but Edwardsville and the medical center, as well as the professional schools. And he was a Saluki through and through. He was a, you know, when I was elected Chairman of the Board, I met with him and picked his brain on his ideas, on the thoughts of the future of higher education, and he was a tremendous friend to not only Carbondale but Edwardsville and the medical school, as well as higher education throughout the state. And I think this is a very appropriate resolution to honor his service. I know he was on the Alumni Board of Directors. He offered his services for search committees, and he was always on campus and a very, like I say, a very valued member of the SIU community. So my pleasure to ask that this motion be approved.
Second?
I'll second that.
Call the roll.
Abuzena. Connolly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hightower.
Yes.
Salger.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
I declare the motion has passed. Next, we want to thank our good friend, Mr. Roger Tedrick. Whereas Mr. Roger Tedrick provided exemplary leadership and service as a distinguished member of the Board of Trustees of Southern Illinois University, whereas Mr. Tedrick was the first appointed to the SIU Board of Trustees in 2004 and served until 2011, including six years as Chairman. He was appointed again in 2019 and continued his devoted service through April of '25. Whereas he served as a member of the Executive Committee of the Board, as a Chair of the Finance Committee, as a member of Architectural and Design Committee, and the Board's representative to the SIU Foundation Board of Directors. Whereas Mr. Tedrick contributed significantly to the hiring of two system presidents. Most recently, these efforts have advanced excellence across all campuses and helped cultivate unity and collaboration between the SIU Carbondale and SIU Edwardsville. Whereas Mr. Tedrick played a critical role in the creation of the SIU System Institute for Rural Health. He actively advocated for the development, and thanks to his vision, the institute now works across the campuses and communities through the SIU system to create and coordinate rural health services for individuals who would not have access to certain aspects of healthcare. Whereas Mr. Tedrick's dedication to the Southern Illinois University has extended well beyond his governance roles, including service on the SIU Foundation Board and the SIU Alumni Association Board of Directors. Additionally, his generous financial contributions have had a meaningful and lasting impact on the university's mission and have enriched the lives of countless students. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees in a regular meeting assembled that Mr. Roger Tedrick is hereby formally recognized for his exceptional leadership and unwavering commitment as a distinguished member of the Board of Trustees. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees extends its heartfelt appreciation for his honorable service and enduring contributions. The Board proudly records its lasting gratitude for his pivotal role in advancing the mission and impact of the Southern Illinois University system. Is there any discussion?
Well, it's a well-deserved resolution that we're making for my friend Roger Tedrick, and we shared a conversation this morning at breakfast, a bunch of us, and he just couldn't stay away. Was that today? I'm like, are you kidding me? No, that was today. So anyway, I'm very honored to, and I'd be honored to make this motion when the time's right, Mr. Chair.
I, are you making it?
I will, yes. Make the motion.
I just want to also thank Roger for his service and his advice whenever I needed it, and if he was listening, but I will tell him this later, I still have his number, and so I am not stopping calling him when I need his advice. He's always been a great sounding board, and I've appreciated that ever since I've been here, so thank you.
Good deal. Simmons?
I'd like to make the motion for this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Abuzena. Connolly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hightower.
Yes.
Salger.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
I declare the motion has passed. That concludes the business for the Board of Trustees today. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board will be held September 18, 2025, at the East St. Louis Center in East St. Louis. The news conference will be held immediately at the conclusion of the meeting. And, Mr. Chair, thank you for taking time to be here with us today, and we look forward to you returning at our September meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Hightower, and thank you for substituting for me today.
Good deal. May I have a motion to adjourn the full board meeting?
Second.
Okay, we have that done. Madam Secretary.
Abuzena. Connolly.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hightower.
Yes.
Salger.
Yes.
Simmons.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Bye.